Ready? Okay, great. Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Lake Clark Shores Second Public Hearing, September 22, 2020, for our town budget, our 2020-2021 town budget. Can we have a call to order? Roll call, please.
Mayor Valentin Rodriguez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul Schalhoub.
Present.
President Pro Tem Robert Schalhoub.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavone.
Here.
Thank you. We're gonna start with a moment of silence for the 200,000 people in the United States who've died from COVID. And if we could have an invocation by Pastor Hunter, please.
Yes, sir. Power heads, please. Our Father in Heaven, we come to you tonight, and Lord, we want to thank you for the privilege again to come and be invited to pray for this meeting. Lord, I want to thank you tonight for being such a good God. I thank you, Lord, for allowing us to live another day on this earth. Thank you to allow us to live in America. Lord, it's still the greatest country in the world. It's got its problems. Lord, we thank you for America. We pray for America. Then, Lord, thank you for allowing us to live and be associated with Lake Clark Shores. Lord, what a wonderful place to be. God, tonight, I just want to thank you for these men and women who give their all to make this community a great community, to raise their family. Or they sacrifice their time, and they give it their ability, and we thank you for it. I thank you, Lord, tonight, as I listen to them talk, Lord, for their camaraderie. Thank you, Lord, they get along so well together. I thank you, Lord, that they're always reminded of the awesome responsibility as they make these decisions tonight that they know that are going to affect many, many lives. So, Lord, help them in their decision, and give them guidance, give them wisdom. Lord, I would just pray tonight that as they know when you deal with people, it's not easy. And so, Lord, there'll be people out there with different opinions, different ideas, but may they all come together tonight in a peaceful solution to any decision that needs to be made. God, may you just again bless them, and may you get honor and glory to your name tonight. Well, thank you for what you're going to do in this meeting tonight. May there be much progress made, and we pray for them tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Hunter. That was amazing. Could we just do the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag is right here.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is our second, the second public hearing for the 2020-2021 town budget, so I would have turned it over to our town manager, Dan Clark.
Good evening, everybody. Liza, if you could advance the slides for me. We're gonna, we've been over this budget twice already. It really hasn't changed since July when we put it forward, so I'll move through these slides quickly tonight. Our challenges for 2021 budget were revenues. Our revenues are estimated to be off 13% or a loss of $456,000. Our garbage rates went up on top of that about 10%. Our, the bright spot in this is the CRA. Our general fund contribution to the CRA was also up about 48%. And the utility fund, we, we are recognizing the loss of our legislative special assessment. We stepped back and we took a look at our core mission, and wanted to make sure that we protected that in the budget, and we define that as our police services, our code compliance, our utility services, permitting services, and then general government in that order. Program changes. We have a very limited capital expenditure in the general fund, and there are no new vehicle leases in the general fund. We also have very limited park and recreation expenditures this year. Program changes. We're proposing no fall lake cleanup, no better than Halloween, no loop around the lake, and no holiday parade or tree lighting this December because of our COVID challenges, and that's been reflected in the budget. There's no change in our millage rate. Our millage rate will stay at 6.2798 for, I believe, our 11th year. The current year rollback rate would be 6.0388. The current year taxable value was up 4.33% to 285.9 million. The previous year final taxable value was 273.98 million, and again, we had an estimated $391,000 revenue loss due to COVID-19 impacts. Most of that is in sales tax. General fund proposed budget is balanced. Labor, we have no changes in staffing and no changes in our health insurance or our retirement. We're proposing a merit increase of 3%, which follows the collective bargaining agreement with the police department. The CPI was down 0.2%. Garbage collection, that rate is up 10%, and the only item we have in the capital budget is for street striping at $6,000. The infrastructure surtax fund is an unbalanced fund because we anticipate the construction of the Pine Tree Bridge starting in April. So, we'll have revenue of $199,000. We'll have planned expenditures of 1.1 million, and an estimated carryforward of the fund of about $216,000. If you remember last year, last November 21st, we closed on a loan for the bridge, so we have debt service in our planned expenditures as well as the bridge construction. The CRA fund, again, is a bright spot. The CRA is growing by leaps and bounds. Estimated revenue from the county is $28,500. Estimated revenue from the town will be $37,400. We have planned expenditures of $50,000 in our beautification program and business incentives project. The estimated carryforward in the CRA will be $3,000. The utility fund is an unbalanced budget, again, because of some construction projects. Staffing, proposed 3% salary increase, no change in staffing, and no change in health insurance and retirement. No new debt is proposed. The transfer to the general fund will remain at $220,000. New initiatives this year will be to finish and implement the rate study, to close the agreement, close on the agreement with Mar-a-Lago K, to build the new 12-inch water main, and to construct the new utility admin building. In the capital budget, we have two new leases for vehicles. We're upgrading to lift stations. We have the Lawrence Road 12-inch water main project and the new utility admin building. Is there? Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Clark, for presenting our budget. Are there any town council comments this time? I don't see any hands. Are there any emailed, written, or verbal audience comments at this time, Mr. Clark?
No.
Okay. So, we're now gonna present the budget, the name of our tax.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Dina Schmidt just raised her hand.
Okay, Ms. Schmidt, could you state your name and address and unmute your microphone so we can hear you?
Ms. Schmidt, you're, you're self-muted. Ms. Schmidt? I guess she's not.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so this is the name of the taxing authorities, the Town of Lake Clark Shores. Our rollback rate is 6.0388. The millage rate to be levied is 6.2798, which is 3.99% higher than the CY rollback rate. I would now have the town clerks designate, read the title of the millage resolution.
Resolution 2020-18, adoption of the 2020/2021 millage rate. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, setting and fixing a millage rate for fiscal year 2020/2021 at 6.2798 mills.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Mr. Freebold has moved it. And seconded by Paul Schalhoub. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. The town clerk designate would please read the title to the resolution 2020-19.
Resolution 2020-19, adoption of the 2020/2021 budget. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2020/2021.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
I had that in stereo. We'll take, we'll take Mr. Freebold's motion and second it by whom? By Paul Schalhoub. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We have a motion to adjourn our budget meeting?
Some of them.
Seconded? Okay, approved. We're adjourning the budget meeting. Now, we're moving into the Town of Lake Clark Shores Virtual Town Council Meeting, September 22, 2020. Could I have the clerk designate do call, roll call, please?
Mayor Valentin Rodriguez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul Schalhoub.
Present.
President Pro Tem Robert Schalhoub.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory Freebold. Councilmember Albert Pavone.
You hear, Mr. Pavone? Okay, we can't hear you. Okay, he's here. Thank you. Do I have an approval of the agenda?
Some of them.
And seconded? Okay, thank you. And consent agenda approval?
Some of them.
And seconded?
Some of them.
Okay, you can figure that out. I think it was both Schalhoub's. We have no presentations tonight. We have no quasi-judicial proceedings, nor do we have a public hearing. Our only unfinished business for tonight's meeting is an ordinance 2020-02 regarding solid waste, and could I have our clerk designate, please, read the title?
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, repealing in its entirety, Chapter 46, Solid Waste of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Lake Clark Shores. Creating a new Chapter 46, Solid Waste, to provide for definitions, deposit of waste, mandatory service, administrative procedures, enforcement, title to waste containers, pre-collection procedures, collection schedules, single-family or two-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, commercial, industrial, and institutional establishments. Volcan vegetative waste, recycling, charges, rates, and fees, private collectors and actual generators of solid waste, sunken containers, special waste disposal situations, parking lots, collection during declared emergency, composting, prohibited activities, and construction and demolition, debris collection and disposal, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
Some of them. Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Am I, am I okay now? Okay. Okay, just to reiterate what I said, it was moved by Paul Schalhoub, seconded by Greg Freebold, and it was voted upon unanimously. Now, we have a discussion on opening town playgrounds, and I think the issue is, we left off two weeks ago that there was an uptick, and my understanding is there's, the uptick is no longer there. So, the question is, what is the recommendation, Mr. Clark, regarding opening up the town parks?
The uptick went down, then it went away, and then it has come back to second highest. I, I guess the question, it's council's decision. We would find it very difficult to sanitize. That, that's turning out to be a major task for us. So, if council chooses to open the parks, it would be with the understanding we would put signage up, but we probably are not able to sanitize effectively any of our park equipment. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask what council's direction is.
Do any of you council members have a motion or input on how you would like to handle the parks?
I would like, I move that we reopen the parks, put up signage that advises everyone to play at their own risks. I believe there's signage proposed, provided by the county, and we open them up either tomorrow, the next day, whenever we can get the signs published and laminated and put up.
Anyone second that motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, who would like to discuss? Mr. Schalhoub, Paul, Rob, Robert Schalhoub?
Dan, as I understand it, the, when we first, is it me?
Yes, sir.
And I went back and I pulled the information, and when we first had it, I believe it was for the week of August 21 to August 27, the statistics, is that about right?
Sounds right. I don't have it in front of me, but that sounds correct.
And then, we were hitting 24 to 60 new, is that 24 to 60 new cases?
Yeah.
A week.
A week. And then, that's when the, it basically became code red with the arrow going up. Then, we received notification that we went down.
That's correct.
And then, we received notification on September 18, just a couple days ago, that it's eight to 13 cases a week, correct?
Correct.
And the eight to 13 cases a week, track eight, did not indicate a red, red flag, pun intended. That would typically a pink flag. Do you know the difference?
I think they're varying shades of red depending on whether that number is going, going up and at what rate it's going up.
Are the adjoining tracks, the track 43, do you know their statistics?
I did not look at any census tracks other than ours. No.
Do you see much activity in the parks?
No.
Never sanitized in the past, correct?
Correct.
Is there, are the bathrooms open?
They are currently not open. That would be part of the direction coming out of council today.
So, when you, when you say we open parks, we open up the bathrooms too?
Yes.
I thought the parks, I thought the parks are always open, just the equipment and the pavilion are.
You're correct. I was gonna clarify that. What we're talking about are the playground equipment, the pavilions, and the bathrooms.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussions on the motion that's pending by Paul Schalhoub? And did I have a second? So, the proposal is to open the parks as proposed. Okay, you need to turn your microphone on. Help you here. I don't know if I can.
Who are we waiting for?
Greg to turn his mic on.
Mouse isn't working. That's funny, too. Good?
Yep.
No, it's not working.
Little bit louder, please.
But we, we're having a technical difficulty. We'll have it ready in a second. I can repeat your question. What is it?
I just want to make sure that I understand that we were down.
The, the question by Mr. Freebold is, we were down and now we're, we were up and then down and back up, but, but not up to the same level as we were before our last meeting.
Correct. We were, we were highest that they measure, then we were the next step down, then we were clean, then we came back to that middle step again.
Okay, so tell us what staff or the town manager's recommendation is in terms of possibly getting more information or waiting, or, not that I'm not considering anything, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing here.
Well, the town manager is incredibly conservative when it comes to this particular issue.
I understand.
And I'm not looking at the risk as much as I'm looking at the reward. How many people do we really think will be using the facilities, and is it worth opening up that facility and allowing those folks to use it when we don't know from week to week to week where we're going to be? The other side of that picture is, how, how long do we play this game of up and down and up and down and up and down?
Maybe until late 2021.
Yeah, possibly.
Unfortunately. So, one more question. So, when you talk about opening the parks, you talk about opening up the rentals for the pavilion, the rental for the community park, putting the basketball hoops back on. Is that part of it?
Putting the basketball hoops back on is, opening the rental for the, for the pavilion was not what we were considering. Simply taking the table off and making the picnic tables available is what we were expecting.
Okay.
And the playground equipment.
Okay.
Any other questions, council members, on the motion that's pending? Okay, well, we have a motion that's on the floor. All those in favor of Paul Schalhoub's motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
I did hear your vote, Albert.
Aye.
And Mr. Schalhoub?
Aye.
Good. So, we're unanimous. Good. So, please open the parks up.
Now, that includes the, that includes the toilets?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And that includes the ice machine and the water?
Those are already open.
The bottle fill station at the bathroom has not been open because it's tied to the water for the bathroom, and that's been turned off. But the ice machine and the ice-water combo machine that's over by the police station has been open.
Okay, thank you very much, Dan. I appreciate it. And the, the sign is going to indicate that, basically, it's your own risk?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. We don't have, make sure, any new business. We're just gonna go right to audience comments, and are there any questions, Mr. Clark?
So, we have, we have a question, a written question from Thomas McGinnis.
Okay, what, what is the question?
Question is, with 42 days until an important election, what will the town council do to prepare and ensure that LCS polling station will have no technical issues? As we have experienced during the last two elections, that caused some voters to be turned away.
Mr. Clark, have you already contacted the supervisor of elections regarding that issue?
The clerk has contacted the supervisor of elections regarding that issue, and we are assured that she will not let it happen again. It should be noted that we have nothing to do with the election. We provide space in a building, but they provide all of the workers and all of the equipment and manage everything that goes on. We're not even allowed to come in the room unless we're actually voting.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I appreciate the question as well. We have any count, we're gonna, we're gonna skip status reports because we did them.
Mr. Mayor, we're, we're not done.
Okay, sorry.
We're not done. Another question, this one also coming from Thomas McGinnis. Regarding 6,900 Westlake property, back at the March meeting, we had a full house. We had nine concerned residents speak. Since then, there are over 40 residents discussing on resident page how this is a very dangerous corner, and any use other than single-family use would be too dangerous to support any additional traffic pattern. Can we set up a town hall meeting with residents for this specific topic before any decision is made? We would like it to be used for single-family use.
I think the answer, do you want to help with that, Mr. Paul Schalhoub?
I'll, I'll wait to hear what you have to say first.
No, I'm just gonna say that we aren't gonna have any live council meetings in the near future until we are approved for that. But this issue has been put on hold pending a review that we discussed at the last council meeting two weeks ago. So, this issue won't be back in front of the council, probably for how many meetings?
Maybe October, but more likely November.
So, this won't be back until November, and so, in the meantime, it's just status quo. Nothing's happening with that property. It's just, it's just got grass and it's in mode and watered. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Has it been truly explained, Dan, as to why we, why it's not back? Can you give us a, you know, a digest version? There's some misinformation that's floating out there.
So, if it's going to, we, we have had an appraisal done for that property if it were to be office. There are only two things being considered for that, single-family residential or professional office. Those are the only two uses that are being considered by staff at this point in time. We had an appraisal done of the property for professional office. It appraised at about $400,000. We've had an estimate of the value as single-family. It is around $100,000. The, the manager and staff have a fiduciary obligation to ensure that the town maximizes its return on investment. And so, we're looking at what it will take from a procedural perspective to be able to make any kind of change to that property that would move it to professional office and allow the town to take advantage of that return on investment. Again, we're not looking at a 7-Eleven or any other use except professional office or single-family residential use.
Okay, are, were there any other questions, Mr. Clark?
Is the town council aware of a huge house party on Westlake this weekend? West Lake this weekend? How will it be dealt with 100-plus teenagers?
Well, I don't think any of us in this room know of that party, but obviously, did the party happen or? Okay, well, I mean, if the party happened, that would be something I guess the police department would look into and just take a report. I mean, I don't know what else we can do at this point, being that it happened.
We're talking to the county and to the COVID education team that they have. That's the same team that goes out to restaurants when restaurants are using more capacity than they're supposed to or places of business that open that are not allowed to be open yet, like some theaters. They're going to come out and talk to the residents and provide some education and talk about the consequences of it ever happening again.
Yeah, I think somebody needs to go to that particular house. Okay, were there any other questions, Mr. Clark?
We have a couple of hands raised and then we have a written question.
Okay.
Email question.
All right. Is. All right, Dan, what are the questions?
All right. Tim Dotry. Tim, you're self-muted. Would you like to ask a question to council? Mr. Dotry?
How about now?
Now we got you.
Okay, got you. Sorry about that. Tim Dotry, 1410 Keller Road. I mentioned this to Dan, I think last week or week before. Driving around the area, you may have noticed, especially in Lake Worth Beach, the prevalence of little free libraries. There are little boxes installed in all the different neighborhoods that allow people to borrow or return books. It's especially used by kids to, and it's a circulation of books, you know, throughout the neighborhoods and everything else. And I would like to be able to install one at my residence with the town council approval to do so.
I, I'm familiar with what you're talking about, Tim. I, I think that's a great program in general. Is there anything against that, Charlie? That would even require the town's approval or disapproval?
I'm not sure of what is being proposed. I'm not familiar with it. But there very well could be a restriction on the use of single-family residential property for a library.
Think of like, it's a, it's their home-built and it's like a post and it's got a little box, like a little house. It's in a little door that opens on it and you just put books in there and people come and take a book and replace it with a book. And it's like this, it's, it's all throughout a few cities. I forgot how many years ago it started, but it started small and started to expand. There's no money that changes hands or any, I don't believe there's any sign up for it. You just go to them and it's kind of like you exchange your books for the books in the box.
Where, where on the property is it located?
I've never heard of one being at someone's home. Usually they're on commercial properties.
Curbside, curbside.
Yeah. Do you want to put it on the easement?
Yeah, that's basically it. Yes, yes. Because it's closer to the street there. That's what I'm talking about.
So it would be located similar to a mailbox?
Mailbox, similar to a mailbox. Although the footprint of the box itself would be several times larger than a mailbox.
There are two issues that come to mind. One is the size of the library. And the second is the location in the city of right, or the town's right-of-way. The town council would have to permit the installation in the right-of-way. And we'd have to ensure that the size does not cause any blockage of view which would create a traffic hazard. But other than that, I'm not aware of any prohibition.
Tim, have you heard of any other residents in, in, throughout our county who put it in their residence in their home like that?
What do you mean, put it in their home?
Well, you're a piece of property. Do you know anybody who has it at their home, at their residence, at the place where they live?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I know Mary Lindsay, who is the steward of the program in Lake Worth Beach and, and she's got several hundred, hundred of them in Lake Worth.
No, but does she have it on her, where her, you know, near her mailbox area, that type of thing? Is she putting it?
It is at the curbside. Yes, it is at the curbside. Okay.
I think we would have to, Tim, you could either work with Charlie or do some independent research, but it's kind of one of those things. If you do it, but it's a code violation, then it'd have to be brought up at that time. I don't think we can have the information now to approve it or disapprove it. It's kind of one of those things. If you do it and it's proper and there's no issues with it, great. If there is, then you'd have to address them at that time.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up in front of you all. Okay? Okay, so I, I mean, if you all don't want it there, I understand it. Okay. I understand it. It just seems like it's a nice thing to do for people in the neighborhood, especially the children. Okay? For them to be able to grab a book at their convenience as, you know, someone's walking down the street. That's, that's the type of thing it is. Okay?
Sure. I don't, I don't have a problem with the concept. Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
And neither do I have a problem with the concept. It, it's a great concept. I think because it's going to be in the right-of-way, we've got to see what is being proposed so that we can regulate the size and location. And as long as we regulate the size and location, I believe it can be done.
If you could prepare something, Tim, a little bit more specific.
I'll have photographs of various types of boxes and I'll have a plat with my lot with with a proposed location. And I'll bring that into town hall and then you all can look at it and see what you think. Okay?
All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next is Bill Murphy. Bill, are you there?
Yes. I am here.
Go ahead.
I, I thank the council for doing, opening the parks. Long wait this moment in this COVID problem. Thanks again, gentlemen. That's all.
Thank you, Bill, for all that you do for us in the parks. Truly appreciate it.
And we have one written question. It was emailed in earlier in the week. It comes from Carol Coniker. And it is questioning whether the town council will meet privately with residents. And that was question number one. And question number two, can any council member give an example of a meeting such as this ever happening?
Sure. Well, thank you very much, Carol, for the question. So I did see on the residence page that former council member John Sutter brought this specific concept to others' attention by saying, you can just contact the town and request a meeting. Yes, that's legitimate. It doesn't even have to be a written policy. We're all here serving at the pleasure of the residents and we serve here for your benefit. So I know I've said it countless times, so has Mr. Freebold and President Pro Tim Chalhoub, Mary Rodriguez, everyone. Councilmember Pavone, we've all said, here's our numbers. Reach out, contact us if you need to talk about anything. If you feel more comfortable contacting the town and asking them to specifically set up a meeting, you can do that. I can tell you that in my limited time on the council, I have had multiple meetings with specific residents, multiple meetings with various residents, usually on an individual basis, whether by email, phone call, or, you know, I just happen to run into them, but you don't have to go through the town. You certainly can. I know that President Pro Tim Chalhoub has been on the council for a long time, as well as Councilmember Freebold. Therefore, they have a higher opportunity for this to occur. I've probably going on a dozen at this point. But yeah, you most definitely can do it. And I know I encourage it as well as every council member here that you reach out to us either personally or through the town. If you want to talk to us, please do so. If anyone else wants to weigh in on their experiences. No? Okay.
Does publics count?
I, I figure it counts wherever it happens because I, we're always on the clock whenever we're out and about.
You know, not only have I met with, and not only have I met been invited to their homes, you know, when the dog, one neighbor's dog bites the other's neighbor's dog, you know, they want to know what we can do. And I've met with them on numerous occasions. I have sat in with residents. I have encouraged the involvement of Dan to quell any rumors or misinformation. We've disseminated accurate information to residents over the last many years. And it's an, it's an opportunity to hear your neighbor. I don't want to Flanagan's from the, from the venue because it's, it's always there. You, you know, you walk into Flanagan's, half of the, half of your neighbors are there. And next thing you know, we're for, you know, to sit down and talk. And Carol, I do. You invited me over to sit down and talk with you and John just a few months ago. We met over at Caravas. That's what I think it was. Gosh, and then when you're, when you're during this COVID stuff and my grandkids coming back saying, where are you? Well, you know, a neighbor stopped me and we wanted to talk. This, the most engaging council that you'll ever find. Phone number is out there. It's 561-762-1969. Can't forget it. 762-1969. I'm always available, always.
All right, thank you, President Pro Tim Chalhoub. Any further comment?
Am I on, Dan, or?
I hear you. You're on.
Carol, if you're out there listening, you know my number. Call me anytime.
That's it.
We have one more question. This one is from Nicole Boger to Mr. Pavone. Specifically, she's asking, how is commercial zoning different from professional office space?
Well, first, for the record, I, I wasn't the one that gave the appraisal for the property because I have had a few people ask me if, if I'm going to be the Realtor for it. And now that that's not taking place. But commercial zoning just has a bunch of different categories. Professional office just happens to be a category inside of commercial zoning. So is that, is that what she's asking? Because I don't, I don't see the question on my end.
That was, that was the question. How is commercial zoning different than professional office space zoning?
It's, well, it's, again, it's, it's still commercial within the commercial bubble. It's just a type of commercial.
So if I could interpret your response, what we're attempting to do is to not allow for anything else that might be considered commercial. We are specifically focusing on professional office, just like this business across the street.
Correct, yeah.
And if, if I could add, the town code says that commercial use is means an establishment which supplies commodity and services for the general public, including retail consumer goods, professional businesses and personal services. So commercial allows for many more uses than strictly professional office.
Thank you very much. I, I would add to that that there's going to be a limited proposal, I believe, to the town council when the time comes for what that professional office space will be. It will be extremely limited. I know that there's been a lot of people who say there's going to be a ton of traffic. Well, that would require knowing traffic studies and doing a lot of research and gathering a lot of data to support the amount of traffic going on right now. The amount of traffic that would be there for each type of commercial or professional office space, such and so forth. I highly doubt anyone's done that. And if the professional office space comes in and they have two people coming and going every day, all day total, is that really a lot of traffic? I prefer it's not. I don't know what's going to go there yet. I don't know what we're going to do yet. I know that we're still waiting on all of our research to be, and due diligence to be performed so that we can make a well-informed and educated decision. But, you know, at the end of the day, you, everyone can speculate all they want, but, you know, we're going to be operating off of data. And we're going to be looking at a limited professional office space use. So I think everybody should rest assured that, you know, we have the town's best interests at heart here when we're considering this piece of property and we're doing everything we can to get all the information we need to make the best and right decision for the town.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Nicole Boger would like to speak. She's raised her hand.
Okay.
Ms. Boger, you're go ahead.
Hello, gentlemen. Good evening to you all. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Oh, awesome. All right, first time calling in. So my screen actually cut out right, I think, as Albert was finishing his sentence. But I was able to log back in, but it sounded like commercial or property, office property is the same thing as commercial, just a subset of it. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a subset of it, but it's very limited in what you can use it for.
Okay, and so if a nice office building that only has two people per day coming in is the one that purchases it and then they sell it a year later, could a different business come in that was more commercial than a professional office building?
Well, they could use it differently. But keep in mind, the zoning doesn't change. So if it gets rezoned, let's assume that it does. It's not like then when it gets sold, there's some new zoning that applies. It's the same zoning. It's like when you buy your house. You buy your house a single-family residential. When you sell your house, it's still zoned, single-family residential. The same restrictions apply and run with the property until a change is made.
Okay.
No matter what comes in, it's always going to be confined to the same restrictions that are put upon it via the zoning. And at all times, the, again, this is what I understand. We have yet to have it before us since March. But it's my understanding the council will be deciding between keeping it exclusively zoned, single-family residential, or adding in the ability for someone to make a limited professional office use space out of it. Therefore, when it goes on the market, a single-family buyer could come in and buy it, professional office space buyer could come in and buy it. At all times, it will, at least my position is it will always be zoned, single-family residential. The question is, do we just expand it slightly in order to maximize the potential return?
Okay.
That's, that's what is before us.
We had over, we had over 60 residents that were active and voicing their opinion on the slot. Does council plan on soliciting the views and concerns of the residents after that study from the outside company is done to determine what the town as a whole has for their input?
I think that remains to be determined. We are a town of over 35, 3,600 people. So I, I think in the past, maybe even in the March meeting, potentially the April meeting or the meeting followed shortly thereafter, I should say, a workshop was discussed. I don't know if we ever voted on that. But I believe that the proper time to determine that would again be once we have our, all of our information to make a decision.
Okay, looking forward to that workshop being done and voted on. And then final question, we miss seeing you guys in person. Now that everything is starting to open back up again and we're able to have smaller groups, how do we get some of these meetings back in? Now that everything is starting to open back up again and we're able to have smaller groups, how do we get some of these meetings back in person?
That's a great question. Dan, what do you think?
Well, we can't do anything until the governor says we can. And, uh, he likes to wait until the last three or four days of the month before he decides what's gonna happen the next month. So we're, we're waiting for him to tell us what's gonna happen in October.
All right. Well, hopefully we get to see you guys in person in October then. That would be great if it could happen.
I agree. It, uh, I miss seeing everyone participating in the, in the meetings live. I can't see anybody in this venue, so I certainly miss it as well.
Maybe we can have both, both, uh, virtual and in-person. If we can make that happen, that would be the winning ticket right there.
Yes, that would be. That will come down to cost and feasibility, I think, when, when that time comes.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
That's all the questions we have.
All right, uh, on to council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Pavone.
No comments today. Happy, uh, parks are opening up. Happy to see all your faces here, although I'm not there in person. Hopefully soon. I'll be seeing you guys at the next meeting.
Thank you. And Councilman Freebold?
Uh, Mr. Clark, thank you for your hard work on the budget. It's gonna be very interesting here. We'll have our challenges. We'll have our problems with a variety of things, but I'm convinced that, uh, with the proper leadership and the council and our residents, everything will work out and it'll all come together and we'll get back to business as usual soon, hopefully.
Thank you. And President Pro-Tim Shawhub? Any comments?
Frozen.
We having issues, Dan?
Looks like his brain's frozen.
Or he's in constant deep thought.
Great mannequin challenge right there.
Uh, he might have lost his internet. That would create that frozen picture.
Okay, um, is he back? No, he's gone completely.
Yeah, he dropped off.
Do we have a quorum anymore?
Yes.
We should do, right?
Three of us. Three of us.
Well, I'll move, if he comes back on, we'll, we'll go to him. Want to thank everyone for attending today. And I echo, um, Greg's comments. Dan, you did a great job working on the budget. It's, it takes a long time to accomplish. Really appreciate the hard work you put in to make that happen. I too am happy our parks are getting reopened and that we are starting to get back to a little bit of normalcy. That being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I don't know if you can, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I need a second.
You have the gavel now.
No, no, I said I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I see.
I was looking for so moved, but.
Bad internet, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.